Everyone, I'd like to welcome you to the Santa Barbara Board of Education Trustees Meeting for October 10th. Not seeing any requests to speak, we will now adjourn to a closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let me just apologize ahead of time for my voice. It sounds bad, but I'm fine. So, good evening for everyone in the in the boardroom. Good evening for those in the boardroom and those who may be joining us by Zoom. Welcome to the Board of Education, Santa Barbara Board of Trustees, October 10th, 23rd meeting.
Good evening. We have Spanish interpretation available here in the boardroom and also through Zoom. Buenas tardes. Tenemos interpretación al español disponible aquí mismo en la sala del consejo y también por medio de Zoom. We also have ASL interpretation available through Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, please leave us in a place of allegiance.
Please stand and face the flag.
Your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. And we want to make sure we have clear exits in the aisles and closest to the door. So I appreciate your cooperation with that. Thank you. So we don't have any announcements from closed session. We'll move to the student board. Board member report. Welcome Anastasia.
We had all of our students take the Panorama Survey, and it wasn't too different from the California Healthy Kids Survey, so I feel like it went pretty well. And then today at GP specifically, we had the whole school do an anti-bias presentation. So we went over the recognize, respond, report, and all of our classes, and then had students present to freshman classes. And overall, from the feedback that I've been getting, it went pretty well, especially for the students presenting. And everyone mainly pay attention. There were just a few people guffing off, but overall, I think everyone got the message pretty well. So now I'm just going to be talking to the other schools to see how they can further receive this information. And then tomorrow, we have at the high school students taking the PSAT and the pre-ACT. So we'll have a change schedule for that. But that concludes my report.
Thank you, Anastasia. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We want to start our board meeting today with the statement on the situation in the Middle East. We are deeply troubled by the recent events occurring in the Middle East. The district condemns all forms of violence. We recognize the impact these events have on students, staff, and families in our community. We will have a message going out to families reminding them of our three Rs: recognize, respond, report. We'll also make available any mental health services for anyone in the school that may need them. And we encourage families, staff, students to please seek out support from their counselors, trusted adults, principals, and other leaders if they feel that they need some support. I also want to share with the board that I've been visiting schools as part of our elementary learning walks, as previously reported. And I'm very pleased to see so many students interacting with text in a meaningful way. Here's a group of students engaged in Socratic seminar. The middle circle of students is discussing the text with a guiding question or an essential question, while the rest of the students observe, and then they take turns going in and out of the circle. In the next picture, there's an example of students reading a text and identifying the elements of the story used by the author, looking to way, looking for ways that the author is using figurative language versus literal language, and doing a gallery walk as they're using both text and art to determine and discern the author's intent. So this is really important because as I, as we roll out our elementary program, our reading program, when was CK LA Caminos for a dual-language program, we're really seeing, I'm very pleased to see how much students are working with texts and really looking at what reading and literacy is about in a critical thinking way that we haven't been able to do since we haven't had an opportunity to have a coherent curriculum. I also want to let the board know Governor Newsom announced that he vetoed AB 1699. I shared that with a note earlier, requiring school districts and others to give classified employees first right of refusal. I know that this board advocated to veto that Assembly Bill, so we're pleased to see that. We know that it would have had a big impact, and I know that as a district, we do have ways of ensuring that we have our employees have many opportunities to move up and to promote. And we've also started an aspiring leadership program that will also help promote within. This is Children's Health and Safety Month. October is Health and Safety Month at Santa Barbara Unified, and we're raising awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. This year's national theme is Take Control in 123. The theme empowers everyone to assess their needs. One, assess their needs. Two, make a plan. And three, engage their support network to stay safe when disaster strikes. As a district, we are preparing by having monthly drills and attending to the area outlined in our safety plans. And as I've now entered my fourth year in Santa Barbara community, I know that, you know, we have had our fair share of disasters and safety is always something that we pay large attention to, and we're always looking to get better at it. October is also National Children's Health Month. This month highlights the importance of protecting children, especially those in ultra vulnerable populations for from environmental threats where they live, learn, and play. This is work happening every day on our campuses by administrators and staff, as well as through the Wellness Committee. It's also dyslexia Awareness Month. Dyslexia is a common learning disorder impacting people's ability to read. It's important to stress and stress and stress that there is no connection between overall intelligence and being dyslexic. We know we have many dyslexic students in our schools who need different levels of support and intervention in order to develop their reading skills and access the curriculum. The district will continue to focus our efforts on literacy through development of our multi-tiered systems of support, including our investment in our newly adopted curriculum. We also know, this is the last one for, this month is October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We know that many teachers in California have a higher rate of breast cancer than the general population in the state. So it's important that we all take steps to lower risks, including self-examinations, regular mammograms when you're at the right age and at the appropriate age and living a healthy lifestyle. We want to also take this time to remember the lives lost too soon from those who have suffered from breast cancer. With that, I'd like for us to just take a moment of silence as we think about this and what's going on in the Middle East as we wrap up my report. So we can just take a moment of silence. Thank you. And now we're going to, I'm going to close with the Every Child Award. As you know, this year, we're really focusing on making our vision statement that has lived in this district for many, many years prior to my arrival, the Every Child, Every Chance, Everyday Vision. We're going to start by recognizing our first nominee for this award, Brenda Vargas from Alta Vista Quezal. Brenda is more than an eight. Thank you. Brenda's more than an eight to our students. For the past two years, she's driven the program's van to make sure students have transportation and arrive at school safely. Students also reach out to her because they know she can find resources for them. Next is Joel, Will Caesar. Will Caesar, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name, your last name. I heard it. Holcizer. Thank you. From Dos Pueblos High School. Joel goes above and beyond to support some of our students with the highest need. He communicates daily with his families and students, teachers. And this year, he took on being our speech and debate coach. He's also been a learning intervention team mentor. Thank you very much, Joel. Next, from Santa Barbara High School, we have Hazel Anderson. Her positive energy permeates throughout so many areas, including welcome tables in the front of our school, helping supervise assessments, working with students and parents to make appointments, and working closely with multiple TAs to train students. Thank you so much, Hazel. From Washington Elementary, we have Phoenix Manzano. Phoenix piloted the new ELA curriculum last school year and provided our teachers with valuable strategies and feedback on how to execute it. She also collaborated with our special education team to assist students with accessing the general ed curriculum using assistive technology. From La Colina, we have Susie Walters. Susie designs creative displays and contests in the library, such as a recent display for Hispanic Heritage Month and a contest to guess the number of shells in a jar, keeping school kids engaged. She also helps organize fun library events such as Lotería and the new Lego Board that helps students to connect with each other in a natural way. We know that this year, in the years, in the couple of years past, we made sure that all students have an opportunity to have an overnight trip through camps. And this year, we took, the team at Franklin Elementary, the teachers took 67 students to Catalina Island for three days for semi camp. They were completely positive and helpful as they guided students through what was their first ocean trip. And you can see a picture of them here and camping experience for many of the students. They helped them hike snorkel and swim. Thank you, Mr. Guian, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Alcaraz, Tammy Guian, and Lauren Tholl. And our last member of our staff who's being recognized from Cleveland Elementary is Lisette Juan Pablo. Lisette is efficient with every second she gets to work with students. She arrives right on time, gets straight to work with her small group. If her activity ends two minutes early, she will continue to add on and or revisit the lesson objective with that group until the rotation bell rings. Every minute counts. So thank you to Lisette. Board members. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Superintendent Maldonado, let's move to board comments and correspondence.
I'll start. Thank you all for being here. It's very nice to see you all. I'm going to keep my comments short to get us to public comment. But just a couple of updates. So in the last week, I attended the Dem Women of Santa Barbara County's event that was focused on literacy and talking about what we're doing to support our kids as in regard to literacy. And we had Dr. Maldonado there to speak on behalf of the school, Santa Barbara Unified. We had a representative from Galita Union School District there from their board, and then from the Santa Barbara City Library. And I thought the discussions were fruitful and intriguing and a lot of interest from folks that aren't typically, they don't typically get involved with literacy, or their kids may not be in school anymore. And I thought it was worthwhile. And so I want to say thank you for participating in that event. The other update that we have is the Housing Ad Hoc Committee continues to meet. So now that we've identified a property Parma School on the east side, we should be coming back to the board with an MOU, an updated MOU from, with the Housing Authority. And we're going to continue to look at other options. Tomorrow, we have a low-income housing tax credit 101 course, a little crash course with the Housing Authority. So that is my update. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you. Good to see everyone. And as you noticed, we have our college t-shirts on and so forth. I wanted to take the opportunity to give recognition to so many colleges and universities that our school staff prepares our students for. And just to emphasize that finding the right or the place, places for a student to education is important and understand that. I know that, you know, myself and my kids and kids, you know, students that I've worked with, along with, you know, I would imagine my fellow board members and yourselves, is that, you know, there's not one college or two colleges that are better than others. I'd like to mention, like, you know, fortunate here to have Santa Barbara City College. We also have Allen Hancock in North County that many of our students will go to either during their high school years or shortly after, while they're figuring out what they want to do. For myself, Santa Barbara City College was the first time that I sat in a college class when I was a senior. And I was like, oh, my goodness, you know, very so different, the dynamic of being there with adults that and sharing experiences in a diverse setting. And then also, of course, in California, you know, the Cal State and the UC system, and recognizing the many private colleges and state colleges throughout our great country. The Promise Program for our high school grads, I think it's a great opportunity for them to discover, to check things out before they get, you know, thinking they have to become, go, stay in a track. And, and then also the UC and Cal State transfer application process with the TAG program, where if they go to City College, then they have a bridge to get to UCSB or to a Cal State program. So just want to give a pitch for that. I, myself, in my home, I went to Santa Barbara City College and then to UCSB. I know Mr. Vans, I think, has the UCS, UCSB? No, is it? No. No, Mr. Shetler, UCSB, okay. And, and so I went to, you know, the City College, UCSB track, and then made it to where I wanted to go to study social work at USC for their graduate program. My daughter, on the other hand, my little one, I call her, went to City College and then to Cal State Long Beach, and then to UCLA for her social work programs and stuff. So we had the Trojans and the Bruins in the same home. But yeah, so anyhow, just, you know, I appreciate all the teachers and the staff support and helping students explore what's best for them. Thank you.
For an update, I just want everyone to know that I attended the Alante Charter School Board Meeting last month. I'll be doing that on a regular basis and enjoy the opportunity to see some of their staff at work and their hybrid board meeting where they had plenty of folks around. So they're, they're doing good work there. I appreciate that. I also just want to say in general, thank you to everyone for being here tonight. But I appreciate the recognition from the superintendent, the things that you mentioned about the current context, about the monthly programs that we're honoring and such. I really, I want to say that I appreciate these recommend recognition, this recognition of broader communities, state and national issues. While it's important to keep our attention focused on every child, every day, every chance, it's also appropriate to widen our view and include the external context in which we're operating while striving for the best in our community. Thank you for keeping that as part of our work here.
Thank you, board members. I'll keep this short. Thank somebody, whoever got the medicine ball. I think that's what this is called, medicine ball. Okay, so thank you for that. It's great. So it's helping. I just want to do a quick shout out to, to the community. Oftentimes, you hear Ms. Edison talk about that our students are ours 180 days of the year, but the community has them 365 days of the year. I happened to be going to the Java Station and grabbing some coffee before work, and I had some junior high students there waiting for the bus. You know, the bus came and and so the bus came, and they were eating their breakfast as most kids are, you know, chomping down stuff all the time. And so the bus came, they weren't finished with their breakfast. And so two or three of them, they said, oh, we got to get on the bus. One decided that. He goes, I'll catch up with you later. However, the very astute three young women at the Java Station, you know, they have the mic that goes outside to call dinner orders. And they said, I hope you're not thinking of skipping school today. So I want to appreciate them, appreciate the partnership of, you know, the community partnership that we have and recognize and acknowledge the, how we take care of our kids is community as well. And nonetheless, he got on the bus because we know he probably wouldn't have if he hadn't had that. So I want to appreciate those young women at the Java Station for being there, whether they were kidding or not, it worked. So with that, I'll stop talking. I'll move to public comment.
We have, I think, almost 30 public comments, commenters. So we are going to do 90. We're going to do 90-second public comment. Please pay attention to those little lights on the podium. When you get 30 seconds left, it's going to turn yellow. I'll try not to interrupt you with any sort of reminders if that'll be helpful. So I'm going to call a few people up if you can be ready when it's your turn to speak. We have, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name. We have Hoseby Galindo, Kate Lambert, and Kelly Mendesh. Welcome. Can you turn on the mic?
How's that?
Perfect. Yeah.
Thank you for listening to our educators message today. I'm Hoseby Galindo, SPTA President, school board and superintendent. Last spring, you had the opportunity to be the heroes of our students and our teachers by analyzing your budget and building a competitive salary schedule that would help retain qualified educators and attracting teachers. Regrettably, you pass on that opportunity. Due to your inaction, this district is struggling to properly staff schools to meet the needs of our community students, our children. Instead of being proactive, your superintendent of Human Resources is asking to be given additional months before you show up to the negotiation table to fix a problem that needed many years ago. We sent you a sunshine letter at the beginning of September requesting that we begin negotiations in October. School Board, you have not brought that letter forward and made it public to our community, nor have you provided your sunshine letter to the community. You, we want to know that you're going to step up to the table and bargain with us. We have not seen that. We'd like to see that on your agenda, please. School Board and Superintendent, a wise person once said, trust is built on two things, competence and integrity. You've broken our trust. Our members feel your leadership has not helped amend that trust. We educators are ready, wanting, and waiting to negotiate. You coming to the table soon can be the steps needed to help alleviate the inequity students face in their educational experience across this district's school sites. Negotiate today. Thank you.
If we could keep it to a minimum, and I think Ms. Mouton in the past has talked about applauding silently so that we can get through public comment.
Or one applause initially and then stop. That'd be really cool. I know that this sometimes looks like we're saying, we're chatting, and it doesn't mean anything, which is what the kids do when we're talking in front of the class. So I think it's, we should go with the single clap. That'd be really great, guys. Thank you so much. SPTA is ready to negotiate. We are not every child, every day, if we have temporary workers filling our classrooms. I am a physics teacher, and I have students who do not know what two squared is. I have a hard time explaining to them how to find a slope of a line. These things should have been addressed before they made it to the high school level. It has been a month since we asked SPTA to negotiate. We want high-qualified teachers to fill all these positions. We have said that we are proud that we, that we added 100 new teachers this year. Good for you, but there are still open spots. We're missing SLPs. We are losing psychologists. We are not attractive in California. We need to bring in teachers who our students can rely on, who will stay here for years. You need to make a promise to them, whether it's financial, whether it's showing them what kind of classrooms they can get and support they can get. We need that now. Please come and meet us to negotiate. We want an amazing school district. We want to offer the best, and we want to bring in the best. Please open a special meeting, and please do not wait until January to discuss budgets. You have had three years to get ready, so have we. We are ready. Please meet us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kelly Mendesh, followed by Joel Block, followed by Carolina Bate. Welcome.
Students deserve high-quality experienced educators. Get USB USD is a revolving door, losing 100 educators a year to other districts. Students deserve educators who can afford to stay in Santa Barbara, yet much of our membership has to live an hour or more away to afford housing. Students deserve robustly staffed schools that offer electives, enrichment, and support. And educators' working conditions are students' learning conditions. We ask that you open negotiations with SPTA so we can get to work negotiating for important improvements that will make an impact on our schools and on our students. Please hold a special meeting this week to open negotiations with SPTA. Hold a special meeting next week to look at the budget. Changes are urgently needed. The district administration is not treating this negotiation cycle with the urgency that it demands. The students are the ones paying the price for vacant positions, underqualified staff, and shrinking elective options, electives options, inequity across school sites, missing teacher librarians at every single elementary school, and more. SPTA is asking to negotiate on urgent matters affecting students. Let's get to work now. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Block.
Good evening. My name is Joel Block, and I'm a proud member of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. In the past, I have spoken about how the relationship of trust between the teachers and the school district and the board has been shattered, and that it was the job of this board to take steps with the school district to rectify that lack of trust. My disappointment is that not only has that failed to happen, but the district seems to be doing everything it can to exacerbate that lack of trust. In early September, the union submitted its sunshine letter and made it clear its desire to start bargaining sessions in early October. The board and district could have made this happen if it wanted to, but chose not to. This could have been an easy way for the district to start rebuilding trust. Instead, the refusal until as late possibly as January has made it clear to the teachers that the district's main interest is in keeping teachers in their place and not in working with us as an equal partner. Perhaps you mistakenly believe that our current union and leadership does not have the courage to stand up and fight. But I represent our union at the state level, and there we have the mantra, when we fight, we win. When we fight, we win. When we fight, we win. We are going to fight until we are satisfied that we are properly compensated and treated as an equal partner. The sooner the board and the district accepts this, the sooner this conflict will be resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public commenter is Carolina Bate, followed by Ruth Rassler, followed by Bethany Guerrero. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, showing further proof of the humanity of the unborn baby. From the actual textbook itself, chapter 17, page 556. Embryo is defined as a developing baby during the embryonic stage of prenatal development. The developing baby begins to form various tissues and organs that make a human. From chapter 20, lesson 2, the book states, poor prenatal care can lead to serious health conditions for the unborn child. And prenatal care is necessary to ensure the health of the developing baby. The book continues regarding the formation of the umbilical cord as that which carries food and oxygen to the developing baby. Why bring these sentences to attention? Because in these actual textbook definitions, we see the accurate descriptive words being used. Baby, unborn baby, developing baby, and human. And yet, in chapter 20, abortion is taught as a procedure to end a pregnancy. And on page 669, abortion is listed as one of three acceptable options. By every observation and even by the textbook itself, the unborn baby is a living, breathing, growing person. Thank you so much for your time.
Next, we have Ruth Rassler, followed by Bethany Guerrero, Aggera, followed by Kim Tilton.
Welcome. Hi, thank you. I would like to start by saying thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I've been a speech and language pathologist in the state of California for about 35 to almost 40 years. I've worked in LA Unified, San Diego Unified, Long Beach Unified, and Santa Barbara Unified, as this is one of the most beautiful As this is one of the most beautiful cities that I have lived in, unfortunately, the cost of living as compared to the salary scale that we are currently on is the biggest discrepancy in this entire state. I have lived here for fourteen to fifteen years and we are in jeopardy of not being able to continue to maintain as my salary has not been really increased over the last fifteen years. I call on you here to please open negotiations with Santa Barbara Uni- with Santa Barbara Teachers Association. There are many important timely concerns educators need the district to address. As a speech and language pathologist, the state of special education over the last five years has been implorable. We have a roving door. We have aides who are not trained. We have teachers who don't show up. And as a speech and language pathologist, I am working very hard to make sure that the special education students at my site are being seen and are getting the best care and services that they can have. Please use your governing power to call upon the superintendent to open negotiations with our union immediately by calling for a special meeting to approve the start of negotiations by the end of the week.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a special education teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High. Our district began this school year with eight vacancies across the district in special education. And while our staff are working hard to fill in these gaps, our school is still down one teacher. Um, we do not have a substitute for this position, which means many of our most vulnerable students are not receiving the full education and support they need to access their education. Our district says our main focus is educational equity and yet most of our vulnerable students are facing a teacher shortage and a lack of services. A failure to attract and retain highly qualified teachers directly impacts our students with the greatest needs. We urge you to open negotiations with our union so we can get to work negotiating for these important improvements that will make an impact on our needed students. Please hold a special meeting this week to open these negotiations. Hold a district meeting next week to look at the budget. These changes are urgently needed by our students. The students are the ones paying the price for these vacant positions in special education and across the district. Our qualified staff, staff are shrinking elective options. The inequity across sites, missing teacher librarians at every elementary school. We're asking to negotiate on these urgent matters. Let's get to work together today.
Thank you. Kim Tilton, followed by Dr. Javier Cruz, which will be followed by Carla Hernandez.
Hi, I'm Kim Tilton. I work at San Marcos High School and I'm a science teacher. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here to advocate for students. Our students who are not proficient in math, they are not proficient in reading and writing and they're not proficient in science. And I encourage the community to start asking questions about the proficiency of your children. It is going down. And I'm tired of hearing about COVID as the excuse. I'm also here to advocate for students who are not physically safe at school. I'm here to advocate for our teachers who ultimately are the only ones that have the power and the skill to move the needle for these children. I'm here to advocate for teachers who come home and have to worry about how they will pay their bills while also juggling the emotional and professional challenges of supporting students that are struggling academically and mentally at unprecedented levels in our careers. Unprecedented. So, every chance, every child, every day, do our students deserve less than the students in L A County or Oxnard? Because that's what the district says when they refuse to at least match neighboring school districts and pay in benefits. A strategy that is essential for recruiting and retaining teachers, talented, driven and committed teachers will be the foundation that can transform and overcome the challenges of our students and families face. There is no magic program, no new administrative position, no forty-five unit apartment complex that will be the magic pill. Every child, every chance, every day begins with teachers.
Thank you. Dr. Javier Cruz. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. Uh, students deserve high quality educated ex- uh educate, experienced educators. Yet S B U S D is a revolving door, losing at least one hundred educators a year. Students deserve educators who can afford to stay in Santa Barbara, yet much of our membership has to live an hour or more away to afford housing. Students deserve robustly staff schools that offer electives, enrichment and support. And educators, enrichment and support. And educators' working conditions are a student's learning conditions. Open negotiations with S B T A so we can get to work negotiating for important improvements that will make an impact on our schools and our students. Hold a special meeting this week to open negotiations with S B T A. Hold a special meeting next week to look at the budget. Changes are urgently needed. The district administration is not treating this negotiation cycle with the urgency that it demands. The students are the ones paying the price for vacant positions, underqualified staff, shrinking electives, inequity across school sites, missing teacher librarians at every elementary school and more. S B T A is asking to negotiate on urgent matters affecting students. Let's get to work now.
Thank you. We have Carla Hernandez, followed by Deana Davis, which will be followed by Kim Barron. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Shorter. Um, I just wanna say that I love my students. I love my job. It, I give, bring me great joy. But um I think that our students deserve better and I think that we do too. Um, I am wanted just to ask the board to please ask um the superintendent to open negotiations with Santa Barbara Teachers um Union. We, uh, this is important matters that we have to address. I think our, our students deserve better and we deserve better. We deserve better. Um, it's not fair and I'm just speaking from the heart here. Um, and, and it feels really, really bad when you have a full-time job and you go home and you get, look at your paycheck and you think of, look at all those deductions and then you have to look at how much you're paying for rent and your bills and then you have to make a choice, which you know, do I buy groceries or do I pay my bills, right? Because that's what we're left with, um especially as a new teacher in the district and I um, I just wanna say, please, please consider this. This is a human. Uh, you know, this, we're, we're people, right? We're people and we deserve better and we wanna give our students everything. We give them their, our heart. We give them, you know, our smiles and our hugs and our reassurances um that the world is a great place and our community is a great place, but we also have to believe it for ourselves. So uh, please call a special meeting, look at the budget, right? And um do what's right by your teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Deana Davis. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, esteemed Board members and Superintendent Maldonado. My name is Deana Davis. I co-chair our district's Special Education Advisory Committee and have also worked for Santa Barbara Unified as a classroom teacher years ago. Um, thank you for highlighting Dyslexia Awareness Month. It's also A A C Awareness Month and it also happens to be Disability History Week. Um, I've worked alongside many teachers as P T A president at Monroe and during my boys' year and a half of remote learning. I'm here this evening to ask you to open negotiations with S B T A. Our educators are the heart and soul of our school district. They provide our precious youngest community members with thoughtful, engaging academic instruction. They support their well-being. They sacrifice their own time and money to enhance the lives of our students. Thank you for working with the city to address their housing needs. Now let's show our teachers that we truly value their work. Please open negotiations now. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kim Barron, followed by uh Eric Nicholson uh and Charles Cloud. Welcome.
Uh, good evening. I teach third grade at Washington School. Um, the inflation from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three in California has been about eighteen percent. The cost of living increase we received during that time was eight percent. So we would need to receive ten percent today, not next year, today, in order to keep our purchasing power the same as three years ago. This would not even be a raise. On top of that, we would need a cost of living increase for the next year or years where depending on the forecast, the estimated inflation is between three and four percent. Analysts agree that the Fed target rate of two percent is not realistic at all. So, um, that would be another nine to twelve percent for the next three years, which again would not be a raise, but to just keep up with inflation. Looking at other districts and strikes occurring in different fields, a cost of living increase for the next three years in the order of twenty-five percent at least over those three years seems very reasonable for us. This does not include a raise, which would be increasing the salary scale overall for everyone. This is especially true and important for Santa Barbara, where according to the latest research, treat, teachers fall in the very low income group or low income group. Please don't force us to go on strike. None of you sitting up there at the top of the district ho- office hierarchy are low income. Why should we be? Also, holding back, holding back the bargaining um and the negotiations is not acting in good faith. And I'm really happy to hear Ms. Munoz uh push college. I went to UCLA. However, I'm paying two thousand dollars a month at my son's rent in Berkeley. So do you expect us to pay our college, our students' college tuition and rent? I don't think so.
Good evening, folks. My name is Eric Nicholson. I'm a teacher at the high school and I am here on behalf. I'm here on behalf of my colleagues who live too far away or have other commitments and I just wanna read their names because they wanted to be here, but they can't. Zach Loats, Christina Hill, Alicia Gerbeck and her husband, who has to work, uh, he's a plumber, I believe, for us and he has to work side jobs almost every night to make extra money. Carolyn Betts, Steve Renahan, David Mendoza, Paul Pasternak, Veronica Caillas, Shannon Montanes, Jose Caballero, Genevieve Quinn, Leela Riverol, Daniel Barnett, Melanie Sutton, Laura Wooster Dorfman, William Dodson, Beth Goldman, Tanner Stark. They all wanted to be here, but they couldn't. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Charles Cloud, followed by Deborah Reed and Deborah will be followed by Becca Wrench. Welcome.
Howdy, everybody. Good evening. I'm here to encourage the district's negotiating team to begin bargaining with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. S B T A is ready to negotiate. Our members urgently need improved working conditions to address compensation, healthcare, class sizes, prep time, staffing, special education, multi-tiered systems of support, workday, calendar, electives, funding, equity, facilities and more. It has been a month since Santa Barbara Teachers Association asked to negotiate. I want you all to think about when procrastination serves students. The answer is it never does. Uh, the district administrators, uh, Dr. Beckio and Superintendent Maldonado have said that they are pushing back the November fourth budget meeting with you and will not be ready to talk about money until January. I can't stress enough how unacceptable that is. Um, it's, I, I can't conceive of anything on your agenda this evening or any other future scheduled meeting that is more urgent than this matter. Um, I, I would like not to have to bid goodbye to colleagues year after year after year who I respect and value. You all allegedly respect and value these people and you have what it takes to solve this problem. You can do it, okay? Um, it would be a bummer for you to say we value you and then just to string us along all year and not start negotiating until January. Um, we, teachers, uh, are gifted problem solvers, but we're not empowered to solve this problem. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Reed. Welcome.
Good evening. Students deserve high quality experienced educators, yet you, S B Unified School District is a revolving door, losing a hundred educators a year to other districts. Students deserve robustly staff schools that offer electives, enrichment and support. One thing that my colleague Eric Nicholson failed to add to his comments was that the reason that those teachers cannot be here are because they are commuting to Oxnard, Santa Maria, Lompoc, Carpinteria. They're picking up their children and making that drive home. As a special education teacher, it's my responsibility and pleasure to conduct I E P meetings with my students and their families. When I have these meetings, I explain to my students and their families that this is a contract between the school district and the family to provide services. With a teacher shortage, we are out of compliance with the promise, the legal promise that we have made to these families. Morally, we are out of compliance with the highest need students in our district. My students look at me and ask, how can you teach us about morals and ethics when you are not holding up your end of the bargain and providing us with education? How can you talk to us about morals and ethics when we're sitting in classrooms with unqualified teachers and long-term substitutes because there is no one here to teach us? How can you talk to us about moral and ethics and make us believe that you care and it's worth our time to come to school when we are just being warehoused? I ask the district to please open negotiations with S B T A so we can get to work negotiating for important improvements that will make an impact on our students and allow us to stop being hypocrites to our children.
Next. Next, we have Becca Wrench, followed by Erin Cavasos and followed by Kathy Speak.
Hi, I'm the parent of an eighth grader and tenth grader. Our family can't understand why the school board is not doing everything in their power to pay staff and the S B U S D what folks in our neighboring districts make. Show students you actually stand by every child, every chance, every day by standing up for your staff. I bring my children to the rallies before board meetings to teach them the power of organizing and standing up for what you know is right. Please teach our children the school board is listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Erin Cavasos.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Um, as we've heard, it's been a month since S B T A asked to begin negotiations and the district's response, we've heard, has been more than disappointing. In this time, this month-long time, our E C E preschool program has already lost a new employee to the Oxnard School District. Her last day, last Wednesday. Over the summer, this first-year teacher filled a open special ed inclusion teacher role at both Harding's and McKinley's six inclusion preschool classrooms. This new teacher spent the summer months working, learning our policies and procedures of the district and looking for housing in the Santa Barbara Galleta area. When the temporary housing option ended, a move to Ventura was the only option. During the first four weeks of school, this teacher was involved in a car accident, clearly shaken by the incident and was very discouraged by the long commute despite the relatively short distance. I'm from Boston and commutes really could be a lot longer than that. Um, so while this, this teacher was conflicted about leaving, Oxnard offered a better package, a safer commute and that, that commute is less than half the time it was to get to Harding. What new teacher would pass that up? Heck, um, what veteran teacher would pass that up? Um, I implore the district to open negotiations ASAP, work with us and help ensure we keep the quality staff we have as well as be competitive enough to recruit the staff we still need in order to support the students of Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kathy Speak, followed by Lisa Marata, followed by Manny Morales. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kathy Speak. I teach English Language Arts at La Colina. I also represent uh parents in that my two boys went through Harding. They went to La Colina with me and then to San Marcos. They uh graduated in twenty twenty and COVID and in twenty twenty-two, one is uh recipient of the promise currently. Um, as a teacher, I have participated in equity movements. I'm proud to have been part of Institute for Equity. I spent a week uh with many of these people, um, got excellent training. I have participated in a grading for equity over several years and uh currently teach in a universal access classroom where we have fought for years since I started teaching in nineteen ninety-five here. Um, equity for our students to have access to high-level curriculum. The kids are all at one heterogeneous group. I am such a fan. I am a believer. It's my second year teaching in that manner. I want equity for our staff. I want our staff to feel they can compete financially with their colleagues in neighboring districts. Why wouldn't an elementary school teacher from Harding move to a Galleta school, a Montecito school, an Oxnard school? Why wouldn't they? If they could make fifteen thousand dollars more or more, uh, that makes me sad. I want them to stay. I want teachers who are committed to this district. You can call a meeting. You're in charge. You can call a meeting and ask to have this negotiation begin now. It would mean so much to us, to me, to the young staff I work with. It would mean so much.
Thank you. Lisa Marata. Lisa Marata.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Minoto, and I have been a teacher in this school district for thirty-five years. I am really concerned about how many of our young teachers cannot afford to live here. I'm one of the few, the fortunate that inherited a house because I was born and raised here. Our teachers who are young and just beginning can't afford to live here. Not with what we pay, not with what they have to pay for their health insurance. It can take almost half their salary just to cover a family of four. That's absolutely ridiculous. We need to do more. We can do more. We need to go to the negotiation table. You have the power to do that. You have the power to start meeting immediately. As part of the bargaining team, for many years, it's been five years since I stepped down. They need your help. They need you to encourage the bargaining team from the district to meet with them fairly and now. Thank you.
Thank you. And apologies for mispronouncing your last name, Ms. Minoto. Manny Morales, followed by Brad. Pincala.
Hey, thank you. Uh, thank you for having me. Today I came to the board to speak from my heart. I am a Santa Barbara native. My family's been here for four generations. Uh, my grandmother was a teacher in this district. She had to move out to Arizona to afford housing. And she would tell me stories of how unaffordable it was here. And now as a former McKinley student and a father of three, I just had my third baby on Friday. I, thank you. I, I want to have a future for my children here, and it's very difficult. And I'm losing family each year to surrounding districts and also surrounding cities. So today I come to, to have open negotiations with you, and hopefully you open those up with SBT. So we can get to work negotiating for important improvements that will make an impact to our schools, our community, our families. Uh, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Brad Pincala, followed by Shannon Jaffe, followed by Cory Cordero-Ravis. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Brad Pincala. I've been a teacher at Galita Valley Junior High for over a quarter century. Almost twenty years ago, I came to this, a board meeting at Santa Barbara Unified. Uh, though many years have passed. Oh, I should say I came with my two little boys. I don't know if I mentioned that. Though many years have passed, I'm here for the same reason, trying to raise the family and pay bills, living paycheck to paycheck for so many years. Has been a challenge. Now, one of those boys has headed to college, and I hope the money we saved was enough for his education, though I know deep down that it's not. Uh, it's time for a change. Teachers in the Santa Barbara Unified need a pay raise so they can afford to live here and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Board of Education members, cabinet teachers, and community members. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Shannon Jaffe, and if you knew me, you would know that I'm usually here speaking on behalf of the visual arts programming for Santa Barbara Unified Schools. I consider myself to be an advocate for students. That's why I'm here. However, tonight I'm here to speak about. Where I see our students failing the most at the elementary level, and that is in special education. Our district's goal is number four in the LCAP is to increase the percentage of students with disabilities. To meet the college and career readiness requirements. How can we do this without paraeducators? It's no secret that we are desperately lacking enough paraeducators. I know at our site specifically, we are short every single day. Paraeducators provide individualized services to students with disabilities through a range of tasks directed by licensed professionals. Professionals, we need them. Research has consistently shown that they have a positive impact on student outcomes. Being a paraeducator is a high-stress job. Para-professionals are often tasked with work that needs to be completed quickly and perfectly. How much does a paraeducator make in California? Um, as of October, October second, twenty twenty-three, eighteen twenty-one an hour. The average total salary for a paraeducator is twenty-six thousand per year, twenty-six thousand per year. Santa Barbara Unified, we can do better than this. Car valets make twenty-two an hour, hotel cleaning services twenty an hour. Fast food workers twenty an hour. We can do better.
We have Cory Cordero, followed by Sonora Coronado, followed by Brittany Minor. Welcome.
Hello, board members, meeting attendees, and those watching out there somewhere. My name is Cory Cordero Rabe, and I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Monroe Elementary School. I attended local elementary schools, junior high, high school, and college, but I'm not just local. I'm native. My two-mas family were the first people here. And I envisioned that I would be here forever, but my choice of profession to serve the community is, might drive me out of this very community. My wife is also a teacher, and we live month-to-month, check-to-check in this town. Based on cost of living, we are the lowest-paid teachers in the state of California. That fact is driving educators out of town. I've already lost two wonderful colleagues and friends who could no longer afford to stay in Santa Barbara. These young, under-thirty teachers found higher-paying jobs in less expensive cities. We also have a tremendous shortage of paraeducators at all levels. The job is not attractive. The pay is not adequate for what the job entails. One would think out-of-compliance IEPs will cost the district more than just paying our pairs of living wage. So, uh, my daughter's IEP is currently out of compliance, and I know for a fact that has hurt her education. Let's see. And how is this possible in an affluent city such as ours? I have noticed when our administrators need support, positions are created and filled, but when our. But when our most vulnerable students need support, they go without. I respectfully request that the board continues to look for solutions that will retain highly qualified teachers and pairs for the students in our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sonora Coronado. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you guys for having me. SBT is ready to negotiate. Our members urgently need improved working conditions to address compensation, healthcare, class sizes. Prep time, staffing, special education, MTS, workday, calendar, electives, funding, equity, facilities, and more. You have heard all of this this evening. Teachers can't afford to live in the city. They want to work on the salary we have. We have a sped teacher on our campus who is severely overworked right now. Because we can't seem to fill the vacancy of another sped teacher. And just as it's been stated before, we have a lot of students IEPs that are out of compliance. Uh, my husband is also a teacher, and we both work in this district. When it comes to family planning. Uh, we hesitate to have children because we're not sure that we can make it work in this town. So the district administrators, we have asked. It's been a month since we've asked to negotiate. The district administrators have been pushing it back, and I've pushed it back to November seventh. We need you to hear the urgency in our voices. I, you're hearing a lot of wonderful speakers who are really eloquently stating the needs here. Um, but we need negotiations to be open now for us to be able to manage to live in this town and do the good work that we know how to do. Um, and I, I just think that if we can't build a climate and culture that shows the appreciation. Um, and retains great educators, we're going to just continue to push them out, and our district will not be what we hope that it will be, all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany Minor, followed by Olivia Happel Block, uh, followed by Angie Diaz. Welcome.
Hi, um, I'm an elementary school teacher, and I'm a parent to two high schoolers at DP, so I'm in the same boat as some of these people, hoping to help. Support my children when they go to college very soon. Um, students deserve high-quality experienced educators, yet SBSC is a revolving door, losing a hundred educators a year to other districts. Students deserve educators who can afford to stay in Santa Barbara, yet much of our membership is struggling to pay rent and stay in the media area. Students deserve robustly staff schools and other electives, enrichment, and support. And educators' working conditions are a student's learning conditions. So please open negotiations with SBT so we can get to work negotiating for important improvements that will make an impact on our schools and our students. Please hold a special meeting this week to open negotiations. Hold a special meeting next week to look at the budget. Changes are urgently needed. The district administration is not treating this negotiation cycle with urgency that it demands. The students are the ones paying the price for vacant positions, under-qualified staff, shrinking elective options, inequality across school sites. Missing teacher librarians at every elementary school and more. My school has had vacant positions in sped and music since the beginning of the school year. Um, SBT is asking to negotiate our urgent matters affecting students now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia Happel Block. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Olivia Happel Block, and I am a teacher at Dos Publos High School and a proud SBT member. I am here to call upon the district and board to immediately open negotiations with SBT. SBT is ready to negotiate. Our members urgently need improved working conditions to address compensation, healthcare, class sizes, caseloads. You've heard it all tonight. To be clear, SBT is and has been ready to begin negotiations. But it seems the district is not prepared for class. It has been a month since SBT asked to negotiate. District administrators have said they are pushing back the November fourth budget meeting and will not be ready to talk about money until January. The district needs to hear the urgency in our voices and call for a special meeting to open negotiations now, not weeks, not months from now. We are asking you, the board, to hold a special section to look at the budget numbers in October, not January. We are ready. You have had more than enough time to prepare, and we are done issuing extensions. The students and educators need these changes now. Please ask the district to come to the table and be ready to talk numbers now. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have our last public commenter for open public comment, Angie Diaz. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm Angie Diaz. I'm a teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High. I'm actually the dual-language immersion coordinator. Um, I'm a new teacher. You know, this is my second year. Um, and so I was really appalled, especially last year at school board meetings. Uh, teachers would come here to the pulpit and right in front, they would resign because they're saying they can't afford to live here. It was so shocking, but the fact that. The district did nothing. We teachers give a hundred percent to our students. Most of us work outside our contract hours. Some of us cover prep periods when we shouldn't be. Some of us are like parents to the students, you know? Uh, we stay and we listen to their problems. And yet, we don't feel like we're supported at all. At Santa Barbara Junior High, we're trying to do this goal of having a student each have a trusted adult. How is that possible when the district cannot retain teachers, when it can't hire instructional aides? We are demanding that you make this budget meeting. It is unfair to be pushed to be pushed back till January. We want to be here, and it's not fair. Please, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone that came out today. Uh, Mrs. Mountain, that is all of our open public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. But thank you all for coming out. We are listening. We are hearing what you have to say. So thank you so much. So we'll just, we'll just pause a minute so people can exit out. Yes, we'll just take a minute, let everybody exit out. We'll continue on board members. I know Ms. Munoz just stepped out, but I want to move on to E, acceptance of donations. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the acceptance of donations with appreciation.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving to the consent agenda, board member, are there any items you'd like to pull from this agenda? Hearing now, may I have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Been moved in second. Been moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Better wait for Ms. Moon to come back. Yeah, we can go ahead. You will just have me, we're gonna go ahead.
All right, so we got a list here. Um, I'll start with the first one. Uh, I move to approve student discipline, education code four eight nine one eight, case number two zero two. Three two four dash zero one.
Second to motion.
Been moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Your motion passes.
Right. I move to approve student discipline, education code four eight nine one eight. Case number two zero two three two four dash zero two.
A second to motion.
Been moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes.
I move to approve student discipline, education code four eight nine one eight, case number two zero two. Three two, three two four dash zero three.
A second.
Been moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
All right, I move to approve student discipline, education code four eight nine one eight, case number two zero two three two four dash zero four.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Was that zero five?
Yeah, that was four.
Motion to approve student discipline, education code four eight nine one eight, case number two zero two three two four dash zero five.
So, a second to motion.
Been moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Uh, move to approve student discipline, education code four eight nine one eight, case number two zero two three two four dash zero seven.
A second to motion.
Moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Uh, move to approve student discipline, education code four eight nine one eight, case number two zero two three two four dash zero nine.
A second to motion.
Been moving second. Please raise your hands. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Thank you. Next move to G eight, approval of the SBO recommended corrections to fund twenty-one in the unaudit act was twenty-two, twenty-three. Business services is, Nance is on her way.
Good evening. Uh, this is a pretty quick and short item. Um, we have the, and it's a, it's a good news item. So what we have is when we do our budgets. Um, we have an external auditor who looks at our budgets and all of our funds and goes over all of our numbers carefully. And we also have the benefit of having our Santa Barbara County Education Office review all of our data and look at it very carefully. And this is a really good checks and balances for all of us to make sure that the, the data is correct. And that everybody agrees with everything. And we did have one fund, which is the Fund Twenty-One, and it is a building. Fund. It's not our regular general, um, general, uh, fund that has most of our, our money in it. It's a building fund that the auditors gave us an adjustment. And when we processed that adjustment and the county education office looked at it, they decided that we needed to. Show it in a different manner. So we have made the correction that the county education office has asked us to do. And that actually ended up a little bit better for us because our beginning balance. And that actually um, ended up a little bit better for us because our beginning balance for the twenty two twenty three school year in that particular fund um, is reflected higher. So it's just a correction, but it's something that we have to bring back to, to, to tell you that we made that correction. And um, we'll have you uh, sign it and then we'll send it back to the county education office and our un-audited actuals will be complete.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Are there any requests to speak on this item? No request to speak. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the SBCO recommended corrections to Fund Twenty One.
I second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Always good to hear good news. Move next to G nine, approval of human resources recommendations. Dr. Beckio.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board Member Superintendent Maldonado. I bring before you the board recommendations from uh, the between the last meeting and now, and I wanted to just point out a couple of highlights that are on the list. Um, if you look at the promotions, I wanted to first of all, recognize and in the room with us too, no less, is Brenda Aguilar, who is um, now serving um, as a confidential um, administrative assistant in the superintendent's office. Congratulations, Brenda, on the promotion. And then also Nathan Assaro, Daniel Botello, Blanca Hernandez, and Cassandra Zuniga are all on classified promotions as well on this list. So congratulations to them too. And then I did want to also take a moment to thank publicly Alison Quijano, who filled in for several days at La Colina as the dean of students while we were waiting for our new hire to actually start and we um, didn't have a dean there. And so she um, stepped into that position for um, work out of class stipend, and you'll see that on the list too, but I did want to make, take a moment to mention her name publicly. And with that, I turn the list over to you for any questions you might have and consideration for approval.
Dr. Beckio, are there any requests to speak on this? No requests to speak. Board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Uh, I move for the approval of human resources recommendations.
Second.
Been motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you, Dr. Beckio. Moving to G ten, approval of contracts and memorandums of understanding under ten thousand student and family services, Mr. Edison.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I am bringing forth um, a contract that was a part of the original bundle package that I sent to you. We've been working on negotiating the contract. This was with AVP. Um, we've had a prior relationship with them. It's alternatives um, to suspension and expulsion as well as supports and services um, uh, for students um, that have been expelled and or were recommended for expulsion. So this was already included in our budget and our bundle. We've just finalized now the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Edison. Are there any requests to speak on this item? A request to speak. Board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I move to approve the contracts and memorandums of understanding over ten thousand dollars.
I second.
Thank you. It's been motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye. Right, uh, board members, we'll do self-care. We'll continue on. Do yourself care as, as needed, and we'll move it on to report uh, H one college and career initiative, education services.
Good evening, Board President Sims Moten, Board Member Superintendent. I'm excited to be here this evening to um, talk to you about our college and career readiness initiatives. Um, first of all, I want to thank you all for, for being a part of the, the college and career uh, wear t-shirt day. Um, we thank you for participating in this for us tonight. I am wearing my alma mater, University of Southern California. And so very, very proud to say fight on as we uh, move forward in this presentation.
I like the gold.
And so tonight we have just a short agenda. Um, we're going to introduce you to our college and career team. We'll talk about our uh, webpage, talk about um, our college visits and plans for the year. And then some of the initiatives that we have uh, moving forward for this year in our college and career awareness and campaign that we're pushing off. And so as we go through this presentation, we will continuously go back to how we focus our work and our ABCs, academics, arts and athletics, belonging, and then community and collaboration. So just recognize so we're trying to weave all of our work together as we continue this process. Thinking about every child, every chance and every day. And so I want to introduce you to the team. I have um, here with me, our college and career coordinator, Ms. Ulisa Garcia. And one of our newest college and career counselors, Ms. Lindsay Woodard. So I want to go ahead and introduce them and then I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Ulisa Garcia to keep on with the uh, presentation.
Good evening. We have additional college and career counselors that aren't able to join us this evening, but I do want to acknowledge them because of for their efforts um, in that college and career space. I want to start off with Alejandro Juarez. He is our college and career counselor in the Alta Vista La Cuesta space. We have Natalie Douglas, who is our college and career counselor at San, at Dos Pueblos High School. Uh, Spencer Barr, who's our counselor at Santa Barbara High School, and then Lindsay, who is joining us here in person today for um, San Marcos. Great. So some of the things or some of the changes that will, you will see in that college and career space are really a reflection of some of the feedback that we receive from our college and career team. And so two of the things that we're going to start off with are really focused around how we communicate with our parents, how we communicate with our students of the various opportunities and uh, resources they have available through the college and career space and also through uh, the district-wide initiatives that I'll share with you um, in a minute here. Uh, so I want to start off with the communication page or what we're doing to address that communication or really make it more robust so that we're really uh, sharing that out to our families. So one of the uh, first ever college and career webpages um, here for Santa Barbara Unified. Historically, we've have had the career technical education website page, uh, but thought from feedback and collaboration with our counselors that we really needed a space to highlight the college and career space, right? So highlighting what we do in that college and career center at the different highs, at all of our high schools. Um, also highlighting where students are able at a district level to obtain work permits, community service. And we've also launched a college and career calendar that really focuses in on um, what we're doing in that space across the district so that students can log in, see what's available and actually register themselves through some of the links on the calendar. Hello. We also have Natalie Douglas here from uh, and I introduced her a few minutes ago, but our college and career counselor over at Dos Pueblos High School. Oh, no. Alright, the other uh, communication piece that we're utilizing to communicate to our families and our students, what we are, what we're hosting and what we're offering in that space. And I have a printed copy for you just so that you see. Uh, this is fresh off the press. It'll be launched out hopefully tomorrow via Parent Square. We did start with uh, the September issue, but it is a monthly newsletter focused around some of the topics that are college and career readiness. Uh, some of the areas that we focus on in the newsletter is uh, obviously upcoming deadlines. So if there's any college application deadlines, financial aid application deadlines, we'll highlight them in this space. We also want to highlight any college visits that we have uh, in our high school space. Um, any communities, resources, and then lastly, a grade level recommendation, right? And so you'll see at the end of the newsletter, recommendations for, for what students could or what are, what they're recommended to do in the ninth grade, the tenth grade, eleventh, and then twelfth grade as well. Uh, this is really exciting to launch. Uh, we are also launching it bilingual. So we have the unified press, which is obviously our English version, y la prensa enificada, which really um, is engaging that, that um, that community that is uh, has a preference for the uh, like Spanish language. Alright, so I'm going to pivot um, into college visits. We do have a variety of different opportunities students have. And so I just want to give you a overview of what opportunities they have at their high school and then again as a district-wide initiative. So we do offer currently uh, small group admission officer presentations. Uh, so our college and career team is able to work with various uh, colleges to have them come in and do a small group connect and presentation with our students at the different high schools. Uh, new this year is uh, on the spot admissions. So students are able to do an application with um, that, that recruiter and really find out um, in that, in that moment if they have um, kind of that early admissions into Cal State Channel Islands, Cal State Monterey Bay, Whittier College, and Mount St. Mary's are the colleges uh, listed so far. Uh, we are also hosting at Dos Pueblos on November eighth, uh, NCAA and AIA uh, college night for our athletics. Our students that are interested in that, moving forward into the higher ed space. And then I'm also really happy to um, share with you that we're hosting again this year, our uh, college night, which is happening November first. We're hosting it at San Marcos High School. This is a really unique event where we partner with Santa Barbara City College to um, bring in about ninety to a hundred different colleges to the college fair so that our students can interact with those recruiters. Uh, there's also a component of it where they're able to uh, sit in on college admissions presentations. Um, and then uh, lastly, they're able to get a start on the FASFA application, which is going to look really different this year, but we're, we're getting prepared to support students and families through that process as it transitions and changes. Alright, and in um, in the spirit of college and career uh, readiness and college and career uh, kind of that celebration of where we want students to be and you know, how we want them to attain that educational goal. We really want to encourage everyone across the board to wear college wear Wednesdays, which we kind of started a little bit early with Tuesday, but please continue to do that starting tomorrow. And really wanting to highlight not just the four-year colleges, but two-year colleges, military programs, uh, career technical programs that students might want to do or have the opportunity to do once they, they complete high school. Um, this is also a great opportunity for parents um, and teachers to really share out their experience in higher ed and what that looked like for them um, and have those early conversations from the parent perspective of what the student might be interested in. Alright, I feel like I'm plugging through really quickly here. Um, but we also have, and I included this um, in your packet, an invitation to our annual high school showcase. So that is happening uh, this year on November twenty ninth. Um, it will be hosted at Earl Warren Showgrounds and in, in format similar to previous years. We're going to have the uh, eighth graders come in during the day uh, for our high school pathways, academies, uh, programs of choice um, and VAPA programs to come and really highlight what opportunities they might have in their high school. Um, and in the evening, it'll continue to be an offering for the community to come out and learn more about uh, what offerings we have in the high school space for students to, to learn more about and potentially consider as their high school. And listed over on to the right is the various programs that'll be there. So you see it, there's a wide range of career technical programs, programs of choice, and then there's um, the visual and performing arts. So you have your theater. Um, let's see what else is on there. That instrumental music, uh, choral ensemble dance. So those are all represented in that space as well so that students and families can have a conversation with those high school sites and learn more about the, the program that they offer there. Alright, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Sheffield.
So our plan is to take this initiative throughout the year. And so we are looking for a countdown to graduation. That's TK through twelve. And so we want to make sure that we're passing this message, starting with our elementary students, going all the way up to the twelfth grade. And so some of the things that will happen throughout the year, we're participating in our parent program that's happening October twenty first. We will have a uh, workshop on A to G. What does that mean? And we're encouraging all parents to participate. Doesn't just have, have to happen for high school. We need to start very early understanding what that is. Um, at the end of the year, we do plan on having um, walk the halls with our elementary, middle school campuses. So having our seniors in their regalia, walking down the hallways, letting them know this is where you want to be. And so we'll, we'll start talking about that countdown with our students. And um, we have a variety of activities planned to get our students excited about getting to their senior year. And then definitely, again, highlighting our four-year, two-year military programs and our career technical programs that are happening throughout the year. So as we continue the countdown, we're, we're, again, we're going to be taking pictures with our students starting on October um, twenty first at our parent day. So we'll take pictures with whatever class our students are graduating from. Another thing we're going to be honoring is we're going to have um, our senior highlights. And so I'm working with uh, Mr. Zukelli in our communications department to highlight a senior every month. And we'll, we'll be sending out nomination forms starting tomorrow for our staff to nominate a senior that we want to highlight every month to just look at their path and see how they're on the road to their uh, successful adventures as they uh, graduate from high school. And we have that invitation there because we're going to start a new program, one with a letter and another with a graduation ticket. So we'll be inviting our students to graduation and what it takes. And so that ticket will take them to a QR code that will give them the requirements to get uh, their high school graduation and then A to G. And then we'll be sending out some letters to help um, our eighth graders as they be get ready for their next steps in high school. And that is all we have for tonight. Um, we're excited to kick off this campaign. And thank you very much. Are there any questions?
As you know, uh, thank you for the presentation. Are there any requests to speak for the public? Board members, any comments or questions, Ms. Minus?
Uh, wonderful presentation. I look forward to, you know, just speaking to each of you and then also attending um, the programs and so forth. Thank you so much. It's exciting.
Additional comments or questions? I just have one question. Um, thank you for the presentation. It was good. I, I just want to make sure that uh, how are we integrating our alternative high schools into this process? So I know we're, we're looking at our three main high schools there, but how are we integrating them, getting them to the various presentations that are there? You know, what barriers may be there. I want us to make sure that we're including. We have five high schools, so I want to make sure that we're uh, including them uh, in that process. And are we having it at, at the alternative sites? But I just want to make sure that we include them. Someone can speak to that for me.
So they do have a college and career counselor at La Cuesta Alta Vista. And they're aware of all the events and just as, as these counselors, they'll, they're making sure their students have access. And then to the programs that we offer, we're always offering that for all students.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So is it possible one time to have it at their sites?
Uh, rotating in terms of the college?
The college.
So for what we're doing in terms of engaging that uh, Alta Vista La Cuesta space is we do as a team. So the college and career team meets monthly. Um, and Alejandro is a part of that conversation. And in, in that space, we do brainstorm. How do we engage? How do we uh, either adapt it or make it more accessible for students? So um, one with the initiatives that I shared, we included, so um, the invitation for college night, the invitation uh, for showcase that, that's going in the college and career letter, it gets sent to all students ninth through twelfth grade. Um, including Alta Vista La Cuesta. So any student that's a high school student within our district is receiving these communications. And it is open for everyone to access. Uh, we do have additional outreach that happens and not even additional. It's in reflection of what we do at the comprehensive high schools where we do. Um, for example, our SBCC monthly visits. It's in reflection of what we do at the comprehensive high schools where we do, for example, our SBCC monthly visits. Those are, we do, we, as of last year, started hosting them separately for Alta Vista, La Cuesta students so that they had their own space to come and engage in that college and career exploration of what options they might have.
I appreciate that because I sit at a, a roundtable and the students that were attending those high schools kind of felt excluded. And so it's very important to do that and I'm hoping that you're getting participation, you know, at, at that level. Because there's, there's a, there's a point of view or perception of La Cuesta and Alta Vista that it's, it's something that it's not. So the more that we can include that and they can be energized around that, that the greater we can change that perception. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I want to call you doctor.
I'd love that. Thank you for the presentation. Ms. Garcia, you had mentioned that there's something different about this year's FASFA. Can you speak to that? Is it hopefully going to be more accessible and easier for our families and students?
That is the idea from the guidance that's been issued. What really is going to shift and there's a lot of conversation and guidance around it is the formula for how the FASFA is determined is fundamentally being changed. The application is being changed. So whereas in previous years, you might've seen an application that was a little bit longer. This application is intended to be short, concise, so that our families are able to access it. With that said, it is launching later than usual. And so that is of concern for our families because they are going to get a later start. And right now it is unknown what that may look like for college admissions, right? So not, not for college admissions, but when students go to make their decision, that financial aid package is, is a significant component of how they make their decision. And so that might come a little bit later. So there's a lot of conversation around how we can get that information to students. And this is a statewide initiative that is rolling out. So we are, there's a couple workshops that are coming up to really help us prepare for how to guide students and parents. Within our partnership, we have an MOU with Cal Soap and they've been extremely supportive and kind of guiding us through that process and are very active with our students in offering cash for college workshops. And we'll kind of roll those out once there's additional dates and guidance from the financial aid application world and, but that's still TBD.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
They're done. Alright. Thank you. So we're going to move to our next and final item or presentation of the evening, the EML, Emergent Multilingual Report. Dr. Sheffield.
Good evening again. I'm very excited to introduce our wonderful new Director of Educational Equity and Multilingual Learner Services, Dr. Deborah Martinez. And she's going to be giving the emergent bilingual, bilingual learner report, our first one for this year.
Good evening, President Simms Moten, Dr. Malonado in the team board and district leadership. I'm here to present to you a report one of three. The second report will, will be in collaboration with another team with it centered on student outcomes. And the last one will come in June, the second one in March, the last one in June. And that one will be a summary of our reclassification criteria. This report, the intent is to build on Anna Pilhopper's report in July and just highlight growth as measured by our dashboard and also share with you some of the work that we're doing to enhance our tier three, tier one instruction. So we always center our work with our centered goals, the ABCs, just as Dr. Sheffield mentioned earlier. And it's no different when we're centering EMLs in our, in our work. So this graphic here is intended to illustrate our overall student population. We do have twelve thousand two hundred and thirty students in our elementary, all the way to high school schools and all. So that, that would be like the total amount. And within that, we do have our English only and what we considered initial fluent English proficient who, who are typically English only as well. That they have a, a different, let me back up, sorry. Let me back up. So I, overall, we have twelve thousand two hundred and thirty students. And from that percentage, forty-two percent of our students are considered ever EML. And you can see the breakdown at the top, that twelve percent, twelve point seven are considered EML, which are our active English learners. Those who are still going through their journey of acquiring proficiency. And then we have twenty-eight point three percent who are, are reclassified students. We consider, we do monitor them for a total of four years. So when we speak about, you know, how do we serve our emergent multilinguals? We want to refocus that attention to how do we serve our ever EMLs? Because we do know that they are in a continuum and despite the fact that they do receive or they do attain proficiency, that baseline is, is still significant. They still continue to receive supports because they are still developing academic language and, and overall language proficiency. The reason why I wanted to point out the graphic at the bottom, which I got ahead of myself, is that within that forty-two percent, you know, that is almost half of our student population. If you think of that, it's, it's only about fifty, if I do my math right, fifty-eight percent-ish is our English only and, and fluent speaker. So that is almost a significant number in which we are conscious about serving the needs of our multilingual students. This graphic is just a more of a reminder that within their journey, they, we always have those initials, those candidates that come into our system that qualify to take the initial LPAC. That's when we learn whether they are emergent multilingual or they are initial fluent English proficient. That typically happens August, September where we have that incoming students. But we do take this assessment all through the year because we have students that come to our system anytime in our year. Then by the time in February, March is when we give that annual assessment, the summits of LPAC and that is used to monitor progress. This visual is intended to illustrate the growth. So our California dashboard measures growth in this way. We do have four LPAC levels. And one would think, then you, you would anticipate that a student would grow or, or improve from level to level. But in reality, there are six levels. So when you take the LPAC and you look at the way that our state is measuring growth based on this assessment, you really have two levels within LPAC two, and then you really have two more levels within LPAC three. So what would be considered adequate growth would be a student that goes from your LP one, which is the English language proficiency indicator, to a too low and then from a too low to a too high and so on. Which it correlates with the research where, you know, students do develop a second language or an additional language within, you know, four to six years, four to seven years depending. It gives them the six years of we are monitoring specifically, it does give them the six years to acquire proficiency. Now, what I, I did share with you the, or included Mrs. Anna Pilhopper's report only because it complements this visual here. This is just a way to look at our growth that is more aligned in how we're measured by the dashboard. So it is, the data is not necessarily different because she did give you that report in July. But it's just a way to align our understanding and how we're being measured. So if you look at the blue, we have fifty-two point eight percent of our students that grew at least one LP level, which means they went from LPAC one to LP twelve and so on. Some of them grew more than one level, but at least one. So that's fifty, fifty-two point eight percent of our learners. We have thirty percent of our learners that maintain that LPAC two and LPAC three. And that's important because we know it's going to take them at least two years to move from LPAC two to LPAC three. And I'm going to say that one more time. We have thirty percent of our learners who sustain, maintained an LPAC two or an LPAC three. But that is important because it takes about two years for them to go through an LPAC two and then LPAC three. So that's good news. And then we had one point two of our learners who maintain our LPAC four, which is also good news because then one would wonder why didn't they reclassify? And I'll get to that in a second. So that we have one point two learners who maintain that level LPAC four. And then unfortunately, we have sixteen percent of our students who decreased the growth. So they, they went back one LP level at least. And that is where we disaggregate data and look at closely using this lens as to how do we best support the four domains, which is listening, speaking, reading and writing. The total at the top, it just gives you the one thousand three hundred students that were assessed. That is the same number that Mrs. Pilhopper reported. It's because we're just looking at the same data in a different way. And then at the bottom, I just have a, a summary that tells you the initial LPAC earlier. In August and September, we had a total of two hundred and sixty-seven candidates and forty of our students demonstrated initial fluent English proficiency. And then from that two sixty-seven, two hundred and twenty-seven students are considered immersion multilingual learners. And those numbers are already included in the total amount that I gave you in the, in the second slide. From this, I also want to add that we received scores in May, June, July. And then we continue to receive them depending on when they're submitted. So it is best practice that at the beginning of the school year, which is August, one would do another sweep to ensure that we didn't miss any child that qualified to be reclassified. And if you look at your appendix C, I believe, I think, it's the profile, emerging multilingual profile. And that a profile was introduced, I believe, last year. And that just illustrates the trajectory of different cases. So if you look at the one in which the child only needed the LPAC to satisfy the criteria, those would be the students that, that we kind of identify in August. Okay. It's not here. It's, oh, forward. Got it. So yes, so in appendix B, then you see profile E. So those are the students that when we do another run-through as to the LPAC scores that we're receiving in July and August, the reason why they didn't reclassify is because they were just waiting for that LPAC four. So once they have it, we ensure that we do the paperwork. It's almost like working a little backwards, but not. Because we don't want them to sit on that classification another year when they can receive different services and different supports. It's like going all over. Okay, so that's, that explains why from the, the, the children that improved with the fifty-two point eight percent, the ones that gained, we did have an additional sixty-seven students that we reclassified in August. I have the breakdown. Just, out of the sixty-seven students, we have about twenty-some in elementary and then the rest is secondary, middle school, high school. Just about. So then, okay, so what do we do with all this data now that we've learned more and looked at our data in a different way? We just got deeper into better understanding some of the areas in which we can support. And I had the opportunity to join Dr. Sheffield in this amazing institute in the summer. It was my tenth day in the job and she definitely put me to work. And I, I really enjoyed the conversations that we had with the team. We had representation from elementary, middle and high school. And it was centered on improvement science to address equity-centered problems of practice. And our focus was EMLs and how do we center our instructional practices to elevate their linguistic and academic outcomes? And these are some of the, and this is a three-day institute. There was a lot of different activities, a lot of conversation. We definitely all knew the data by that time and understood where we needed to focus our attention. There was a consensus that strengthening our tier one instruction was where our attention needed to be. We are an MTSS district and that falls into our other work in which we can, you know, refocus and enhance our, our outcomes. So there was an agreement to use a PD, PDSA cycle during their professional learning community. So the sites are employing those practices. There is a, a strong attention on augmenting the academic conversations. And that's just a, a framework that augments talk and elevates, you know, academic discourse across content areas. We also have already started the work with Universal Design for Learning and building on that and finding those overlaps with integrated and designated ELD. And then also we do have our elevation mall modules, which are opportunities for our teachers to engage in learning about multilingual learners. And we do start this training from the top, our instructional leaders, our principals in every opportunity that I have to speak to them in whether it's sharing strategies or sharing just in how to elevate our emerging multilinguals and assistant principals and deans. We obviously work with our instructional support specialists, our language and literacy coaches, our MTSS coaches, teachers and support staff. So we're So we're trying to be in alignment with what we share with principals that it trickles down all the way to teachers in many ways. Because we do have support staff that directly works with teachers and helps in those efforts. And with that, it, that concludes my report. I don't know if we have time for 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 one questions. I'm sure we have time for that. I meant the other activity.
Yeah, let me, I'll explain that one. So board members, you've asked what the LPAC is like and what I've asked, uh, Dr.
Martinez.
Martinez. I've I've made it a, I'm like my mother now with six children. Everybody got called everybody else's name. So my apologies, uh, Dr. Martinez. I asked you to prepare an activity for you to take one of the LPAC questions. Are you game? It'll only take a couple of minutes. Yes, okay, we really want to be able to demonstrate the language and cognitive demands that students have to go through in taking the LPAC. From my career, thirty-four years in education, this is by far the most difficult test I've seen. So I wanted to have you experience it, um, to Dr. Martinez.
Okay, so if we can go back to the presentation deck and go to the very last slide. Thank you. And then in a minute, Julio, when when I cue you, you're gonna click where it says. It's in mine, actually. So there's a recording. I can play it on here. Okay. Okay, then we'll do that that way. Okay, so you do need um, a clear piece of paper. Just a blank piece of paper, a writing utensil. And if um, district leadership, if you can join us as well. Okay, before I start in just a few seconds. What you want to think about is a third grader that you know, or a fourth grader or a fifth grader. And the one that you can relate to, you can kind of think of if they're third grade, they're nine, ten, eleven. And also kind of think that you're in a different country and this is a language that you don't understand. Or you understand somewhat because you could be at a different, a different at a different phase in your trajectory. And the test examiner is in front of you. It's just you and the test examiner. And this is part of the speaking portion. So I'm telling you more than the child would know. And and then you pretty much just sit in front of the test examiner and she or he begins with the following script. You ready? In this part of the test, you will listen to a recorded presentation. You are going to listen to some information about how telling time has changed over time. You will hear the information only once. There are pictures on the screen that go along with the information. You may take notes as you listen. When the presentation ends, you will summarize the information you heard. You will explain how telling time has changed over time. You will include examples from the presentation and use relevant ideas and details and clear language.
Beginning of time, people have found different ways to mark the passage of time. Nowadays, we use clocks and watches to tell time. But thousands of years ago, people often used nature to help them. For example, tracking the movement of the sun. Picture one shows an example of one of the earliest ways to tell time by using a device called a sundial. A sundial has markings on its face that represent the hours of daylight. As the earth turns each day, the sun appears to move across the sky. The stick in the middle of the sundial casts a shadow of the sun's position in relationship to earth. The shadow then shows what the time is. Picture two shows a mechanical clock that appeared in the Middle Ages. Back then, people discovered that by using weights and springs, they could move wheels within a clock. These large clocks were usually located in the middle of a town, high up in a tower. The clocks had a tool that would strike a bell each hour. That way, everyone knew that an hour had passed because of the sounding of the bell. Many cities would build large clock towers so that the whole city could hear the bell. As technology advanced, numbers and faces were added to these clocks. Early clocks were quite large. However, people needed clocks that were much smaller. And in the eighteenth century, the British government offered a reward for anyone who could create a small clock that could be used while sailing. Without an accurate tool for telling time, sailors had a hard time navigating large ships effectively. A man named John Harrison invented a small device known as a sea watch to solve the problem. Picture three shows an example of Harrison's watch. It's small enough to be carried in your pocket. And people eventually started referring to these devices as pocket watches. Of course, nowadays, we have many different devices for telling time, including wristwatches and smartphones.
Okay, so because you're adults, I'm going to give you different directions. I need you to pair with the person next to you. And then pretend that one of you is the test examiner. So one of you will take a pass and not do it. And the other one will actually summarize it. So once you're in a position, I'll just give you a couple of seconds, decide who's A and okay, so here are the directions. This is what your test examiner would tell you and you will respond. Summarize the information you heard. Be sure to explain how telling time has changed over time. Include the examples from the presentation and use relevant details to kill and clear language. Um, when they're done, they're done. Usually the child can pull very far. They they just go so. You are definitely native speakers or proficient English speakers. Our learners don't speak that long. They typically do have shorter answers, but this just gives you an insight of the cognitive demand that is required. Not only are they listening to something that's complex. They have to synthesize, they have to be able to summarize, they have to be able to use some of the language that is used in the recording in order to even score close to a four, which is a rubric. And the test examiner does have a rubric and does have to look for some of these elements that, you know, would be challenging for one to acquire it in in the initial stages of their development. Later on, they they do actually do pretty well. So, thank you. Thank you for participating.
Let me just add that imagine if we did the same thing in Spanish. For those of you that are not Spanish native speakers and you would have been asked to do this activity in that language. And so that's the cognitive load and the language demands that we're looking for. And that's why it's so important that everything that we're doing with literacy development with our teachers and our students includes language frames and ways to start sentences. So you'll notice that when you walk to classrooms and other ways that students can access and then own the language themselves. So they can listen to something like this, process it with a visual and then repeat the language back. And so the, this was a third grade example. Third through fifth, this is third through fifth graders. Imagine if they've been in the school, in a US school for less than a year versus like TKK. And that's why those early years are so important. So I just wanted, sorry, I just get, this is like my area of love and expertise, Ms. Munoz.
So I don't know if there were any questions or?
First, let me just keep the proper order. Do we have any requests from the public to speak? Okay, all right. Now, board members, do you have any questions or questions?
Yes, I think is excellent example because like, for example, I was able to go.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. Um, I was just saying that, you know, for example, I could do this in English right now. You know, we've been talking English all evening and so forth. However, if I was told, you know, do the same explanation in in Spanish, it would take me a little bit of effort. No, it wouldn't go as smooth. And such, for example, I don't know. How do you say sundial in Spanish? You don't say. And so for so excellent example for us to actually go through this exercise. Thank you. Thank you.
You want to ask a question in the middle of the chat?
I did. Thank you so much. You did, you did. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the activity in particular. I think it's really insightful and I would, I don't know how or when, but I think more people need to get that experience because it is, it's tough. So because it's so fresh my memory, um, because we just did the activity. What what are they looking for? When they get the response back from from our kids to demonstrate proficiency?
So there is a description per picture. And the test examiner has to look for certain words that are used, certain phrases that are used. The rubric does say that the child has to use like coherent sentences. There is noted note to grammar and also coherence in the way that they're telling the or or summarizing because it's a summary. So there are specific details per picture that they're looking for.
So for example, I used a different word with a similar meaning. Are they looking for a specific?
No.
Vocabulary or?
No, just the summary structure.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to say this upfront is, I'm going to ask you some questions, but if you don't have the answer, that's okay. What I would love in the future, we did something similar to with the budgets to have the opportunity for board members to meet with staff to ask any and all questions. I would love for this to be one of the topics where we could possibly do that in pairs. Because what I want is each time that the, uh, this comes to the board, I learn a little bit more, just like a lot of different things. I'm a layperson with a lot of, not a lot, but some of the things that come to us at the board. And so each time I learn a little bit more and get a little bit more context, but I really want to be proficient in this knowledge set on this particular topic so that I can be a good advocate. And I need some support in that. And so I'm going to ask, ask that of you, Dr. Maldonado. But here, here are some of the questions. So, uh, can you go back? You may not even need to pull up the slide, but you're talking about reclassification and the fact that we don't get test results until, I think, May, June or July sometimes.
Come in batches.
Yeah, and so were you talking more about a process question that some of our students don't get reclassified until August? And so that we have to kind of wait for those test results? I I was a little confused.
Yes, so depending on where the child is in their trajectory. Some of them have already have an LPAC four and they need to work on either their basic skills or their reading Lexile score. So for them, they already have a four, taking the LPAC again, they just want to maintain it. So when that, when their reading scores increase, that's when they reclassify. They don't necessarily need to wait for the other LPAC. But for the kids who have everything else but the LPAC, those are the ones that kind of we pick up in August. And the reason for that is because we start our testing window in February. And we schedule testing for the sites. And every site for various reasons finishes at a different time. Because we have a window from February to May. So those who start in February and end, we get those scores right away. We get them like in May. Those who finish at a different time, obviously that delays the, when we receive it. We don't wait for everybody to finish the assessment and then ship it or then close it. We do it in batches. If that makes any.
That makes a lot of sense. Um, and so if I heard you correctly as well, even if our students get a four one year, but they don't meet the reading proficiency, they have to take it again and get a four again.
Add some context. I think I know where you're going with this. Every year, the finish line moves sort of both for the LPAC and for the literacy attainment and for the grade level. Because they're also doing report card grades in ELA. So every year, it's like starting again. There is a small window where I think you can um, hold one of those scores. And that's why the team monitoring these kids all the time is key. And that's where we can get better as a system where we know who the child is, we know what they need. We know every time they take a test, we go and look, okay, what were they missing that they needed? Okay, they're almost there. And so that's why that profile that she skipped to appendix B is so important. Where we always know where the kids are, we know what they need, we know when the test happens and we check how many pass, how many passed and quickly get them reclassified. So that that is, and all those tests happen at different times. There is not alignment because the state has set the dates for the LPAC. And we can't change those, but we can't and while including report cards, we have set dates. So a lot of this has to do with also calendaring. It's it's pretty complex.
Well, and and what I'm hearing too, because it was going to be one of my next questions. Each year, the test gets a little tougher. And so there's an early, a level of urgency as much as there can be, right? Because it takes some time for our kids to get a a score of four.
Right, which is the reason why when we notice that they've already met the great, the basic level skills and the reading Lexile, we're just hoping and praying that they're getting a four. Because they have everything else.
And are we working with, I'm imagining we're providing extra supports, particularly for the LPAC?
And I don't literally mean we're hoping and praying. We are deliberately looking at the profiles. And we do have a new system that's going to help us even improve our ways of monitoring through elevation. So it'll be it'll be a little more simplistic for our administrators to be able to do that as. So when the new reading score comes in, because we have markers, we have opportunities in the year to take that. So that gets uploaded in our dashboard, if you will. So then that tracks the child as to how close or how far they are from the reclassification journey.
That's really helpful. The test, so uh, one of the slides had the calendar and it was talking about the initial LPAC for new students. And then the summative LPAC for the annual progress monitoring. For students that take it in one year and in August, new students to to the February to March on here. Are those the same tests?
No.
No.
The initial is just think of it as a screener. It's, we are just looking to see if the child needs language support. So if they don't meet the threshold, then they're classified as an emergent multilingual. If they do meet it, then they're, they're initially fluent. And that, that's, that's that. There is no monitoring. There is no, they're never English learners on record.
So I don't, I don't, I don't know if I'm going to get the answer right now, but I'm interested in knowing what sort of reforms are needed for particularly the LPAC. Cause the LPAC seems, and I, we've talked about this before, problematic in that it happens once a year. It's a really tough test. If they don't pass it and they're, they're real close, it gets that much tougher the next year. Yeah.
I'll take a stab, but, uh, one of the things we've talked about is, uh, having an organization called Californians Together that does the advocacy at the state level. And a couple of years back, they were considering doing the LPAC twice a year, but there's so many different ways of looking at it. And the problem is that people in this, uh, world do not agree on whether it should be twice a year or not. And, and the state landed on the initial and the summative. But we did want to have a summative in the fall and spring. Uh, but I would like to, um, ask to have that advocacy group come and present to you what have been the advocacy efforts. I think that would probably best answer your question. And, uh, I can just have them do a short board presentation on the history of what all of that has looked like.
That would be extremely helpful.
Yeah. One thing locally that, uh, we can do, and I do have all intentions in, in, um, introducing this or helping raise the awareness is the LPAC is actually, I think of it as cast. There's some method to the madness. There, it's all, it's designed and, and test types. This was one test type. So the more that our teachers are aware of what these test types are and the rigor and the kind of questions that our students are being asked, the, the more that they're aware of that modality, the more they're able to infuse that within their everyday teaching. And that takes obviously planning out how to introduce this and, um, giving them the tools to be able to fold it in into the practices that they already employ. So that is one thing that, you know, I've experienced doing that in a different district and really helped our scores. Cause it raised the awareness of teachers. Cause in the same way that you experience this, many of our teachers, I, I don't know for sure, but I would guess that some of them may not have any concept of the rigor or even the modality. Oftentimes it's only those few teachers that do administer the written portion, the reading portion that get the glimpse. Um, but there is a way to infuse that in a calendar so that they're infused throughout the year. And as we gain awareness and an insight, then we are better prepared to be able to address the, the rigor of the assessment.
That makes a lot of sense. And it's reassuring to know that that's what you're thinking about. And some of the considerations going forward. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm going to continue to have a lot of questions. I appreciate, uh, you being patient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question about that, you know, trying to understand this. And of course, you know, there's a lot to it. Um, on the slide thirteen where I mean, I'm sorry, slide three, where it mentioned the percentage of EMLs and, um, the ever EMLs, the middle one, um, twenty eight point three percent. What does that stand for? The RFEP?
These are our reclassified fluent English proficient. So these are our learners that already met reclassification criteria. But we still monitor them for four years and we've learned that we would monitor them their entire stay. Because think of the LPAC, it just measures a level of proficiency. And if, when you look at the criteria, it's basic skills. It is still, it is just enough English to access, but it doesn't mean that they're at grade level sometimes. That just means that they have enough skills to access. So which is the reason why the state changed it from two years to four years of monitoring. So when we think of, how do we support our EMLs? We're not just thinking about those who are actively learning, but also the ones that reclassified and ensuring that they're still maintaining their level of academics, that they're still moving along with their peers. Uh, so we, the state introduced the term every EML, which is where we want to draw our attention. Where when we serve our emergent multilingual who want to think of, we're serving, we're thinking about our ever EML, the child that once owned the classification of EML reclassified, but we have to check and ensure that they're still doing okay.
And along those lines, the middle one, the, I'm sorry, they are reclassified. Those are like, those are monitored for four years. Correct. And then the EMLs, let's say the twelve point seven percent, is there is there like an average of how many years that you would say, um, you know, that like a student is um, how to say, a- advancing? You know, or such as it, is it, you know, I don't know.
You know, the state does give us six years because the adequate progress is one LP level every year. So, and then it, it aligns with the research, four to seven years to reach proficiency in a new language. So they're still in their journey. They're, they're still developing language on various levels.
And then is there, I mean, I imagine there's also data of like, let's say, you know, summer or of course, you know, COVID where they go back a bit and so forth. Okay. Um, and my other question was on slide six. Let me see. Okay. So just looking at, let me try to see if I could figure it out. Okay. On slide six, it was the some, uh, some of the acronyms, the at the very bottom on the left there where it says initial LPAC in twenty twenty-three. Okay. The, you know, the forty IFEP.
Sure. So those are out of the two hundred and sixty-seven candidates, forty students met the threshold. So they're considered initial fluent English, initial fluent English proficient.
Could you describe that a little bit?
So they're not considered emergent multilingual.
So we know that there are many gifted students in our, in our programs. Kids who come into us that are like five, six, because this is initials are typically kindergarten age, first grade. Uh, second, you know, when they first come to school, these kids, when they're given the LPAC, pass it.
The first time.
The first time they take it. So those are, those are kids that actually have managed to learn two languages. Come in, take the test, they get screened and they're initially fluent. So they never receive services for language. But we know when we see the title I, or the label IFEP, that these are kids that know two languages because their parents already told us that they speak another language at home. Remember that the beginning of this whole process is anybody whose parent tells us that they speak in the language at home gets that initial test.
And that initial test would be given, you know, is that one, is that also like either in August or February?
That's when they enroll. So we.
Whenever they enroll for the first time in school, but definitely starting in August for all case, sorry to interrupt the K first. Take it the first time they roll in school, but if kids enroll, because they come from other countries throughout from, from August to February, they allow that initial.
Uh, I'm sorry, for, from.
From the, from whenever they arrive. For the first time they get, they get to take that test. That initial is taken once at the point of enrollment.
Okay. So what's, they have to wait, sorry. They don't have to wait for that one.
So, so they take the initial and we do have thirty days to give it. So whenever they come, that's when the clock starts. We have thirty days and they still take the summit. On that first year, they take it, they take two. The initial and the summit.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, a couple of things. Um, the, the, uh, first of all, can you clarify for me again, the difference between RFEP and ever EML? I, I'm hearing that it's once you're RFEP, then you're ever EML. So how do those two numbers?
Um, so your emergent multilingual plus your RFEP equals every EML. So your every EML is just a way to say the child once owned the classification of EML.
Okay. So it's not necessarily, it, it, it is necessarily an overlap of EMLs and RFEP.
Yes.
So that's not a separate group of students.
No, it's, it's the intent to look at them all.
Okay. All right. Um, so your presentation, even as we're getting these questions has, has raised more questions for me. That's, that's, uh, the sign of good MTSS, I think. Um, the, um, the thirty percent that sustain at year two or three, level two or three. Um, do, does that mean that it's possible that these students are actually getting a year's worth of gross growth? But they're staying where they are because the test is getting harder?
Yeah.
Okay. The same thing then would be true of students that are declining, those sixteen percent. Somebody could be staying at the level that they've reached and yet they're going to decline because they're falling behind on a test that's growing faster than they are.
Exactly.
That's, that really, that really helps clarify some of those numbers. Cause you, you know, as, as somebody that looks at numbers, I'm like, well, that thirty percent that's flat, every, every single child in that has a different story. How long have they been there? Two years, three, four? Did they come from fast growth and then they slowed down? Did they, every, everything there? Those are, those are snapshots that are interesting, but all they really do is shine a light on what more we need to do, know about the individuals. And that only happens in a system like what we're trying to build of MTSS where we're looking at every child and knowing their story and hearing it. And there's always a temptation to see that snapshot of thirty percent, sixteen percent, ooh. What we need to know is that student, ooh. What do we need there? So thank you. This was really, really revealing and, 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 um, uh, I appreciate the time that, that we're dedicating to it and the questions being asked. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I agree with those questions. I, I just want to go back to the root of this, like, cause I asked myself, is this still the structure or the system for today's learners? And, and, and with regards to Mr. Escobida asking about how do we advocate to make that change? Because I had that question number one. And the second question, what's the point of making it more difficult? And, and it, you know, from a de- developmental stage, like I feel like what I'm feeling. You know, so how do we change the system? How we advocate for change in the system that needs, needs of today's students? And I'll go back a step farther. How do we support it? On the early end, when you talk about how to summarize. And I'd also say last is that if some of these folks who've given this test had to take this test, they might think differently. Like today.
Yeah.
You know, and so I think that's important too, as we start to, to, to look at all the things that we've asked, you know, from the board today is that how does it meet those needs? Does it still meet the needs? Have you, you thought of this however many years ago when they thought about it in terms of those pieces? And then how again, does it, does it impact the social emotional of the students? So, sorry.
Yeah. I, and the one thing I'll, I, the one thing I'll add is, um, I had the privilege to be part of the LPAC making when this happened and when we transitioned from the old test to this test. It was a really difficult conversation to have among educators. You can think of literacy specialist, people from different backgrounds to come up with questions and rubrics. And I think the intent is to always align to grade level expectation so that the bar was that, so that the rigor is not lost. I think that's always been the intent. And the reason why this seems so rigorous is because I think our framework changed from what we considered proficient in those days, like think of eighties, nineties to what's proficient today. And how important public speaking is, or just speaking in general, and being able to be coherent with our thoughts and, um, it's just, our world has changed so much. So the alignment to grade level standards was kind of like the, the trend or the conversation that was in that those rooms in Sacramento, I still can remember just the complexity of even just forming and generating a question and then attaching it to an activity. And of course I was one of hundreds and hundreds of educators that were a part of this process. Um, not to say that the test isn't, um, not that the test is not fair or, 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 or it's just right. I just think our practices need to align. Ultimately, our practices and our awareness in the classroom and how we support our teachers, that's what I feel is our work.
I appreciate that. And, and then again, what, what do you need from us as advocate, as advocates to, to make those changes and, and to do that? And I think it's, it's so important to, to keep evolving on how kids are learning, what the environment they're, they're coming with, coming in with. And does that system, the MTSS, as we're saying up here? How does it support that? How do we evolve? How do we change? And I think part of this starts with with, back with the early care and education. So how do we, are, were earlier educators in that room? I don't know that. But if they weren't, they need to be, right? Because if that's what we're looking at, because we're also looking at it from a developmental stage too. You may not be developmentally ready to do that. It doesn't mean that you're less, any less proficient. You're just not there developmentally. So have us, what do we need to do to get in the room to help you do what we need to do?
I think just, um, continue to ask the questions. Cause I think helping others just better understand the complexity of how we can best support our students kind of eases some of the load in the sense that the expectation is realistic. Like we understand the complexity of how to serve multilingual students. So continue to ask the questions and I'm happy to provide, you know, information if that's needed.
I agree. And we look forward to the presentation. You said that.
Yeah. And I, I would like to add a little bit to your question that, um, in addition to that, the advocacy work around dual language programs. When we have a, a significant number of students is very important. And why? When you're in a dual language program, you're actually getting support from your primary language so that you're developing two languages at once. We have IFEP kids that can do it, or IFEP kids that can do it. Um, the other area that I think is important for, um, the public to understand. And, and it's so important when Dr. Martinez shows EMLs in RFIPS, twelve percent of our EMLs, I always use this metaphor of, you know, if you were in a sports team, your junior varsity and your varsity team or your Olympics team, we're setting the bar at the Olympics level. And if we report only EML CASP scores, CASP scores, some people in the public or community will say, look, all kids who speak, uh, another language are not able to learn and they correlate that with intelligence. Whereas we know this is a journey that takes time to learn the language. And when they become RFIP, when we compare sometimes even our fifth kids to English only and their outcomes, we see that they have higher outcomes because they've been able to transcend that language and cognition level. So that's why it's important that we understand EMLs, RFIPS and ever EMLs. And what I've, when I talked to the team, for example, when we pulled up eight through G data, I asked to always report EMLs and RFIPS next to each other. Cause if we don't give you RFIP, but we only give you EML, it looks like they're doing terrible. And that's the wrong message to your point, uh, for remember banning is that people don't understand that. So we have to be cognizant of advocating for the groups in that journey. And that's why the ever EML part also matters.
And, and the more students that are, that become RFEP, that group of EMLs gets smaller and smaller and, and, and it can have a, a significant impact on how scores are reported.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for a great, oh, almost disappeared, sorry.
I just wanted to say, uh, it's clear that a ton of work is being done here. So can you please express the gratitude from the board to you and your team?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we are now moving on to, that is our last presentation. Thank you, way to end the evening. Uh, so on coming events, you see them on your agenda there. A future agenda items as well, you see that and also the governor's candle, refer to the government's candle calendar for that. And our next board meeting is October twenty-fourth, twenty-three, right? Same time, same place, uh, eight thirty-five, eight thirty-four and a half, this board meeting concludes.